Special meeting, City Council, City of Nalden, Tuesday, May 15th, 6:30, 5:00 PM. And this is to address the, approve the plans and specifications for the Old Viking project. Old Viking Boulevard from Nalden Boulevard to Highway 47.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I have a question procedurally before starting this, we're accepting the agenda. Would it be appropriate for council to be able to speak to the issue of the damages at the park?
That's not noted in our special meetings.
Thank you.
All right, that being said, I think we'll open up with Shane, say anything on this?
Okay, so Old Viking Boulevard is first on the agenda, I assume?
Yep.
Okay, so...
First on the agenda is a resolution approving plan and specifications ordering advertisement for bids.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor and council, as you're aware, we've had, prepared a feasibility report for constructing a two-inch overlay on Old Viking Boulevard following the public improvement hearing. The council directed me to prepare plans for that improvement. One of the things that we heard at the public improvement hearing was in regards to some of the drainage problems. And I actually visited the site right when, you know, there's still snow on the ground, but it was when things were melting, and I just took pictures of where there were obvious drainage problems. So I guess it'd be appropriate to just kind of go through those quickly. That's also the handout that I gave you today. So, starting, starting on the top, really no drainage problems with those top two pictures. The one on the lower left, there is quite a bit of water standing there. But there's quite a bit of vertical separation from the road itself, and it doesn't seem like that is really affecting the stability of the road. And so we actually do not have anything planned for addressing that first water problem. There is, the culvert going under Old Viking is plenty deep, there's definitely grade that that could be, if that driveway culvert were replaced, that could be ditched back to Nalden Boulevard, or when it gets this deep, it actually overflows to the south.
And this is the driveway heading to the west, towards Nalden Boulevard?
This picture, so...
We're facing west right now.
One thing I should mention is these pictures are geotagged, and so there's an arrow going to the picture location, which shows you where on the roadway it is.
Right.
And I did...
So which way would this drain if the culvert was, the driveway culvert was?
It would drain to the west.
So it's what would be the, in effect, the field culvert right now going into the property we assume is going to be developed fairly soon?
Right.
The old A and V parcel. So at that time, we would address the proper drainage when we put in the drive?
Yeah, we could ask them to, you know, this is technically in our road right-of-way, so it may be a little bit out of the scope of, you know, the building construction or something of that nature. But he'd have to replace that driveway culvert.
Correct.
As part of his project, which more than likely take care of it. Yeah, I think there would be, have to be some, you know, ditch excavation to the west also.
Which we would presume at the time if he wasn't having it part of his construction.
Correct. And I did, I did drive all these areas and looked at them with Joe, and so we came to some agreement of what we think we should consider correcting now as opposed to what's maybe not as high a priority. So in the, moving on to the right, up here on the...
So, so on the, on the top side there, the north side of that same location, there's no ditch, but you say the drainage down towards Basil Lake is sufficient there? The top left picture, which would be the, the western side of the north?
Yeah, yeah, and the, the top left picture, there's very little water standing in the ditch. On the, the next picture to the right, you can see there's some water, you know, kind of in the road and, and near the driveway, that's really just because there's a potholes there and they're holding water.
And that's looking east?
Yes.
So it's on the south side of the road?
Yep. And that area is scheduled for patching. So on the upper right, that is on Sheet 7 of the construction plans, and in that area, I mean, there's holding quite a bit of water, and it's within a couple of feet vertically of our road surface. And in that location, there actually are driveway culverts, but they are almost entirely filled with, with sand or sediment.
So what's the plan there?
So there, just simply be to excavate a ditch. That ditch, that, that wood will drain to the east. And if you look here, probably hard to see on the plan that you were provided, if they're printed on eight and a half by 11, but we actually surveyed the areas where we identified problems. And so this will drain to the east. We can correct it and excavate the ditch to somewhere in Station 4900, and then from there, we really can't do anything about this driveway at this location, and that is the picture in the lower right-hand corner. In that location, there's, you know, kind of a, a rock retaining wall. It would be very expensive to install a pipe. It would be, you know, probably just that one pipe alone would be 15,000 or 20,000 because of the length. And that location, we'll just continue to run over that, that driveway as it always has. But that would more or less restore the drainage in our ditch.
Isn't the one, he claimed there's a pipe under, a concrete pipe underneath that driveway? He, that's the one resident complained about drainage.
Or here?
Yeah, I think he was saying there was some old concrete pipe under that driveway, and he was claiming that the township or the city filled that ditch in, which we never did.
Okay.
It was done at the time, like the property owner put that retaining wall.
Sure. Yeah, if there's one there, it's, it's not visible from the surface at all.
Yeah, he was saying it was buried.
And there's just, there's just really no room there because of that. Moving on to Sheet 2, that first picture in the upper left, there's some water running along the shoulder, that's just really a high shoulder, there's an adequate ditch there. There's no problem. The next picture to the right, it's the same situation. Until we get to this upper picture, right here, where my finger is pointing to, in this location, again, there's just a, it's just a matter of a ditch that's been filled in. So that is on Sheet 9 of our construction plans. And that big tree is labeled here, it's Station 85 plus 00. There is a culvert under the driveway there, and really, the ditch is just filled in on the west side of that driveway culvert. So by some simple ditch cleaning, that could be upgraded to drain.
Where, where will that drain, east or west? All right.
On the, the lower picture, the second from the left, as you're going up the hill, you can see that there's a, the slope is coming into the road, there is no ditch at all on the south side of the road. And there, just because of the slopes, we don't have the right-of-way to excavate a ditch. And so we are proposing about, roughly 300 feet of curb and gutter at that location. Using, it's called B412 curb, and the four inch is just a smaller back, so it's easier for plowing and whatnot. And the 12 inch is the pan width, so it's only 12 inches wide. So it'd be less disruptive to add that in. Joe and I did, did get out and look at this area, and there's quite a bit of cracking and, and, you know, pavement was wet in this area. So I do believe that the lack of drainage in this area is causing, you know, the road to, the road base to become soft and crack. So it would be a recommended improvement if this, you know, with this project.
How about the one to the left of that, just a further, a little further west?
Yeah, there is just, the driveway is, the sides of the driveway are higher than the driveway itself, so water's running down that driveway and onto our road. There actually is a ditch in that location.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I have a question on the curbing. Because that's not something we typically have in Nalden. Is there any thought that somehow that's marked above ground for when we're plowing? Because I can just see that four inch of getting taken out by the blade.
County does it right now. In front of my place, they've got curb there, and they do put markers, and they come up to it so you know where, where it starts.
Yeah, I mean, we have different people, I mean, our, our staff is plowing every year, but then we bring in new people, and it's something, they only do one season a year. And to prevent the damage.
Yeah, that can be marked with a, a guidepost. You know, Joe and I discussed, you know, there's also an option of Batuminas curb, which is cheaper, but yeah, this, this road's, you know, it's only 22 feet wide, it's so narrow, that that Batuminas curb would likely to last a few years until the first chunk of curb was taken out by the plumber. It would just continue to be taken out year after year. But also relies on, you know, you're also not putting the water in concrete, which is one of the advantages of a concrete curb and gutter, is the water, concrete's less, more suited for concentrated water flow. Okay, so moving on to the third page of pictures.
Those other two bottom ones, the, the one is right across from the top one where you're already ditching that off.
On what picture?
On it, so on that same page, the third from the, the left.
Okay.
That's right, that's right across the street from where you're going to put the ditch in.
Sure, that's actually at the same location, just a picture from a different angle.
Turn around from the other way.
In both pictures, you can see that big 60-inch willow.
Yep.
Yep.
And then a lot of, and the salt there, what's that one?
That's just a, a high shoulder. So there's a ditch there, just the shoulder's a little bit high, so the trap is a little wide.
Well, take it down and...
Well, we'll actually be raising the road by two inches of the shoulder, so that will take care of it. So moving on to the third page. And all those pictures are really of the same area. If you look at the geotag locations, they're all within a couple hundred feet of each other. On the plan view, it starts on Sheet 11. Really, that's the situation, there's just, there's just not a ditch there, and there, we also lack driveway culverts. So in order to correct that, we have to install new driveway culverts, excavate ditches for a few hundred feet, and this driveway culvert, the lower, on Sheet 11, at Station 123 plus 50, would act as a high point. From that high point, the drainage would go west, and east of that high point, the drainage would go west. So that would require three new driveway culverts and a few hundred feet of ditch addition.
When you say would, are you saying will?
Well, that's something that I guess I want to talk about with the council as soon as we're kind of finished going through all these projects. So then we have one more location that's on your last sheet. That's really the only location between Cleary Road and Highway 47. It's just a matter of a, a field access with no driveway culvert, and so that's a pretty simple fix. There's actually a ditch on either side, it's just simply installed in a driveway culvert at the location of that field access. So with that, you know, I tentatively prepared these plans setting up the drainage improvements as an alternate bid, in which you kind of have a base bid for the overlay itself, I would include the curb and gutter in that base bid, because that would be difficult to go back and do at a later date. But if for some reason you chose not to accept the alternate bid, a lot of these drainage improvements could be completed, you know, say after the fact, under a separate contract or however the city would choose to do it. My recommendation would be to complete them now with the project. But with that, I want to also remind you that the, the original feasibility estimate did not include any of these drainage improvements. So we're probably looking at a, a total cost of somewhere right around that $30,000 ballpark, which was not included in the original feasibility estimate. If, you know, so I, so I guess there, there has to be some discussion on if we move forward with these drainage improvements, would these be a, like a city maintenance cost, or would these also be considered part of the project cost and partially assessed to the benefit
To me, I, it, it seems reasonable to have it be part of the project cost. I mean, the integrity of the road is impacted by them. It would have been nice to have them as part of the original feasibility study, but, but at this point, if it's within the legal bounds to do so, I think it needs to be part of the, the project cost.
Okay, and is there, is there a desire to bid these as an alternate bid? Or is there, I guess with the council, alternatively, could we just include them as a, part of the, part of the base bid with no consideration for...
I would say, it's my personal recommendation, part of the base bid. Or the rest of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
So Shane, you're saying it'd be about $30,000?
Right, that's my estimate.
Just approximately, so if we split that in half, we'd be adding it, adding about 15,000 to the assessment value?
Correct.
Um, I'm just trying to pull up, and, and there was, how many houses were in there?
I don't have that number.
I can't figure this out.
Sixty-three, sixty-three, sixty-five.
Sixty-five, I think it was.
So it'd be just 200, 300 each, if I'm guessing right.
Sure, and one other thing, one, one, Joe and I visited the project and looked at these drainage areas, we also took a better look at all the mailboxes. And again, the, the original project budget had a line item for adjusting the mailboxes after the overlay is completed, which would just be for, you know, just for height. So when a, when the project's completed, we would be aiming to adjust those mailboxes for height, so that's their, in between the 42-inch and 45-inch post office requirements. A lot of those mailboxes are not swing-away type, and, you know, in order to adjust those boxes, they, they are typically removed and then, and then reinstalled. And so as long as we're reinstalling them, Joe would like us, Joe asked me to, to consider the adding swing-away mailboxes, which again, would be an additional cost. You know, there's 45 or so mailboxes that weren't swing-away, so...
So there were, a third of them that were?
Yeah, there were a number of them that were.
Mr. Mayor.
No, Mr. Glazier.
Brad would like to say something, he has to go take care of some business.
I guess, Dylan, is it Howard? I guess, in regards to what Shane is saying...
Just, just for the, the record, it's Brad Schmidt-Bauer.
Correct.
Speaking, so we're on video here, so...
Okay, I just like to say, if we could, give me an alternate when you bid this, Shane, to reclaim that road, leave it at the 22 feet, let me use regular class height and not the class two limestone for the shouldering, that'd be a huge savings, and let me lay two and a half inches of mix on the reclaim. And I think you'll be surprised where it comes in, you'll get, I, in my opinion, a better road.
Sure, I actually talked to Jeff from your office, my office, we kind of had the same discussion.
I mean, it, it, you know, real quick, and the patching's going to be a huge item out there, as you know.
Right.
And the thermal cracking on the road right now, to me, it needs to be rounded up. They, we just have an alternate, that's all I'm asking for, to bid.
Is that, how does that work, Shane?
Well, generally...
So, so to understand it, right now, we're talking about patching and laying two inches on top of patched and repaired materials.
Correct.
And what, what was proposed was reclaim the top surface and lay two and a half inches down on top of reclaim and use class five on the, the shoulders instead of limestone. Right?
Correct.
And so with the reclaim, that would take care of some of the patching or?
All.
All of it?
Right.
I mean, there's still the potholes and stuff, you, you would, you...
Yeah, so in a...
Would they write down to that?
It, it should mainly eliminate 90% of your patch, there should be no patching. The only thing that happens is we could have an isolated grade failure in this stuff that we don't, not aware of at this point.
Right.
And in that, you would fill in and, before you overlay?
Would have to be dug out to whatever Shane and I are, wherever, you know, and filled in with some appropriate material.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Shane, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you recall, this Old Viking Boulevard was originally identified for an overlay several years ago, one of our, our earlier road studies. And when we initially discussed adding Old Viking for an overlay this year, particularly with the, the road and bridge committee, it originally did not make the list because Joe and I discussed it, and our thought was, well, we probably missed the ideal time for an overlay, it's kind of late. But an overlay does still extend the, the life. I mean, if, if we overlay that road this year, it'll be a lot better than, than it is now. And it will extend the life by like 10 to 15 years. The, the advantage of doing a reclaim project and paving a new mat is, is now we don't have all that thermal cracking that will reflect through. If we, if we simply overlay this road now, we would expect a lot of, you know, thermal cracking to reflect through that surface. We're using a, a two-inch mat, so it won't be as bad as if we use a thinner mat, but we'd have to go in and, and crack a lot on a regular basis to keep the moisture out and kind of maintain the integrity of the road. But really, that overlay, we're just trying to extend the, the light by another 10 years is the, the rule of thumb for an overlay. Generally, with the reclaim and pave, you use a thicker, you know, thicker Batuminas mat than two and a half inches, usually closer to three and a half inches. And you could consider doing that two and a half inch mat, but then you'd also want to program probably in your CIP 10 years from now, coming back and doing an overlay to add some strength, so that, so the road, you know, you get closer to 20 years out of it than, than, say, 10 or 15. I don't think having an alternate bid for reclaiming and pave is a, a bad idea by any means, but the, and by reclaiming that Batuminas and its existing aggregate base, now we have, let's, we don't really know what we have for sure for aggregate base, because we haven't done any soil borings, but let's say we have six inches of aggregate base and three inches or, I think four inches of, of pavement existing. And by reclaiming that, we're mixing it all together, you actually, the reclaim machine mixes it together in place, so if we add six and four, now we have 10 inches of aggregate base, so we automatically increased our, our thickness of our base significantly through that process. The reclaiming cost probably isn't a whole lot different than the patching cost of $70,000. But at this point...
Would you agree, Brad?
Yeah, yes, I mean, no, I agree with what you're saying, yeah.
You know, we have, if we, if we put down a, a two and a half inch mat instead of a two-inch mat, you have a half inch of additional Batuminas that we probably, you know, didn't have otherwise. So I do think it's going to increase costs, again, a little bit, similar to the drainage improvements. I also do think it'll be a, a better road in the long term.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
To Shane, is that, the reclaim process, what is the time period compared to the overlay? Is there, is it a longer period of time to accomplish it, less, the same?
It's, it's not much different. You know, I, in my mind, there's probably about, you know, close to a week worth of, of prep work with the overlay project, going in and patching all these areas, milling driveways and whatnot. You know, with the, the reclaim machine, I'm sure that could be done in a day or two. They follow that right after, and they grade it compacted. I don't, might even be a...
In a week, it'd be done in a week.
Do you have, you have your own...
We'd have to get the curb under, there's, there's a few, few issues to get down with there, but not many.
You have your own reclaim?
Pardon me?
You have your own reclaim machine?
No, 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 no. But, you know, Randy knows, we do so much of this for an over county, that, that is the ticket for restoring these roads. The only other thing, like Shane alluded to, ideally would be to go two inches of base and an inch and a half of wear minimum. The county goes two and two on that type of road right now. But I'm, I'm just trying to think, gee, two and a half would work, I, I feel, again, budgeting for an overlay.
Right.
Brad, do you remember when you did Burns Parkway a few years ago, they just put one lift on that, was that two or two and a half? What did the county, I don't...
That was a three-inch lift, one time.
Okay.
Ah, mediocre, but there we had saw three, two areas that, you know, the road, that was a failure there. I have to agree with it, I don't know how it's really holding up, you know, it's a deal.
But we think two and a half would, would suffice for, how long?
You know, it's, it's, it's hard to estimate, because really, we, the tools that we use are for designing a road for a 20-year life. And this, you know, probably would, so we don't have any charts to say, well, if you, you know, reduce the Batuminas by this, or, or any way to estimate. My, my experience, I guess, tells me it'd probably last pretty well for 10 years, and once we started getting closer to, to 15, it would start to show its age if we don't overlay it or do something to, to add strength to it. You know, Batuminas is considered flexible, but it also is considered to have a, a defined life, and that life is measured in ESOS, which are equivalent single axle loads. And so really, every time a heavy truck or a car drives over that road, it's, it's expending a, a little portion of its, of the road's life. You know, age and weathering is also a factor in there, but one of the major components of pavement design is how much traffic we'll see over its 20-year life.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
So just ball parking of the reclaim, how much more would that, you think that would be? So just ballparking of the reclaim, how much more would that, you think that would be?
So you take the seventy thousand dollars of patching out?
Right, but we have the added cost of, of reclaiming and shaping the base. But I, 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 I think that's somewhat of a, a wash.
Is it a wash, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm looking.
Right, and then, I, I think the, the added cost is, you know, if instead of doing a two-inch layer a bit, if we look at doing a two and a half inch or maybe even a three inch, that's where the, the added cost comes in.
Price is up right now because of oil?
Price is up and good. Brad probably gets them before I do, but.
Yeah. The only thing I, you know, yeah, if we have an alternate, I think I can get under that for shaping and reclamation, if we wanted to do it that way.
How much, how much more ballpark are we talking?
I think.
Three inches versus, I'd be like, two inch, two and a half versus three.
Oh, no, that one I'd have to do a little math, that just doesn't come to me. Again, the three inch, I just don't like to lay three inches at one time.
No, I, I would think I'd do a two-inch base with a inch, inch wear.
An inch and a half wear would be ideal for that road.
So you do a two-inch base this year and an inch and a half next year, or when do you do the wear coat? Or would you do a base and a wear coat in all in the same year?
On a established road like this, we could do a base and a wear coat almost in the same year.
Same time, or does that base have to settle some?
Excuse me?
At the same project time, or does it have to wait some?
No, relatively, you know, you can pave the, the base and the follow make, you can pave the, the wear course.
Well, to me, it makes sense to, to look at the alternate and see where we come in. But I think we'd end up with a better road reclaiming. And I think, if we're going to do it, this would be the time to do it, rather than try and come back in ten years and do another overlay.
Right, at the end of the ten year, if, if we were to go forward with the overlay project, at the end of the, the ten years, or maybe it extends a life fifteen, at that point, it's, in my opinion, it's probably a reconstruction project. So this, either way, if you look at the twenty-year life cycle, you know, if, if we, if we went with the overlay now, there'd be a, a more major repair in ten or fifteen years. If we consider the, the reclaim and pave, you know, if we, if we reclaim the road and went with a three and a half inch mat, there's no question that would be a, a twenty-year road if we looked at it.
And at twenty years, we're probably overlaying rather than rebuilding?
Right, then at twenty years, you know, sometime, I like to do them, ideally, the, the best time, in my opinion, to overlay a road is before it gets too cracked up. And so, you know, maybe that's.
Either way, somewhere down the road, you're talking about.
Right.
An overlay though, instead of a rebuild.
Right, in other communities, by, by overlaying roads at strategic times, we're seeing road lives of thirty or forty years. You know, much more than the, the standard twenty-year life that they're using design it for.
All right, council interested in entertaining an alternate bid for reclaim and.
If they're going to be close, I would say yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree to that also.
Councilmember Bettinger?
Yes.
All right. So, we'll make that a motion?
Is, is there, we could just have a little bit of discussion of, you know, would we like to go with a three and a half inch Batuminus mat, which is a two-inch base, base quarters with an inch and a half wear quarters? That, I'm, I'm fairly confident would be a twenty-year design? Or would you like me to, to go to something that's maybe closer to our original project budget, with the understanding that we'd have to come back and, and do an overlay or do some kind of structural improvement within ten years?
My, my personal opinion is, is the three and a half.
And, and I would concur with that, but it is going to cost more money.
Do, do we need to quote it both ways so we know?
Well, the, I thi- I think the challenge is we're actually going out for bids with this project and, you know, if we get too complicated, that, that tends to cause confusion and it may be even drive prices up because there's some confusion.
Council? Councilmember Bettinger? Three and a half or?
Ideally, three and a half would be nice, yes, but that isn't what we told the residents, that's going to drive the cost up quite a bit.
Councilmember Rayville?
I agree that it would be a better product in the long, long run. But how do we explain that to the residents if we told them they were looking at a, what was it, a four thousand dollar assessment, I think? Four thousand dollar assessment? How do we go back and tell them, is it a third more? I mean, I don't, I don't know what the assessments were. And are we, excuse me, are we under any legal obligation in regards to what we originally told them for pricing or? Trying to find what the assessment was.
Yeah, I mean, we can get the, we can get the city attorney's opinion too, but, you know, the feasibility report is, is a kind of preliminary examination prepared at the beginning of the project. And prices can change and the scope can slightly change, I mean, this is, it's a. My guess is that if we ask the city attorney, he would say, we, we've met all the, the legal obligations. The only thing that the city council should think about is, you know, the, if, if we're proposing to increase the assessments, how we're going to present that to the residents. That would seem more of a, a political, you know, it's, it's tough, because if you tell them one thing and, and do something else, we, we ought to have a, a real good explanation that goes along with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville?
Excuse me. In the feasibility report, January second, there were sixty-five homes, four with indirect access. And the assessment was approximately forty thou, four thousand forty per unit. And one thousand ten per quarter unit. So, any idea of what that would go up to if we did the three and a half?
Uh, I didn't bring that feasibility report with me, but if you could look at, there's a, there could be a line item for the Batuminus.
Three dollars and, three dollars and fifty cents unit price for.
It should be a, a unit price of around fifty-five to sixty dollars per ton.
Oh, right here, okay.
And the big number.
All right, fifty-six dollars.
And the, the extended price on that is?
Three thousand, three hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and twenty.
So the original feasibility estimate, we had three hundred and nine thousand just for Batuminus. And we're talking about increasing that Batuminus thickness from two inches to three and a half inches. So it's not quite double, but it's, you know, another seventy-five percent of that number. Get a, a little bit of economy and scale for having a bigger project.
Is there anything else that we are taking out of that, though? That would help buffer that?
Does the reclaim counter the patching, I mean, is that a trade-off?
In my opinion, if I didn't run the numbers, I think we'll be under that to reclaim and shape that.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville?
I think if we, if we could ask for a third alternate or a second alternate, I think that would be a, a smart thing to do, we would have the numbers. And hopefully they're, without having to do the first part of it, the patching and stuff, might not that, you know, might be well worth it. And if we can explain to the residents that we're looking to provide them with a better road, the other additional items were the curb and guttering and the, the drainage issues, which is what the residents brought to us. I mean, we're, we're responding to their questions. They also talked about, how long is this road going to last after we do the work? This would give us a better product.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan. I'm just having a hard time saying that we're going over budget and, or, or adding on the project, adding on to the project is one thing, if we're adding, grading to make the existing road last longer, but I also know that we've got lots of other areas of work that need to be done, so we're, like, continuing to add to our cost. Are we going to still be able to get, ma- make repairs necessary elsewhere? So, I'd like to, I'd like to figure out a way that we can keep it within the, keep it within the budget we have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make that a motion to approve the resolution with the three options. The one, first option one, including the drainage corrections.
Okay.
Option two, reclaim, overlay with two and a half inches.
Okay.
Option three, reclaim, two and, an inch and a half, three and, three and a half inches total. I don't think that's, I was just, for a contractor, it's, they got an SCQ, it's just numbers.
The only other question I have, I guess, if you don't want to change, is if, say you put it out originally like you have, bit, all right? And I'd say it was a little bitter on that, the way it's set up right now. Value engineering, that's something we can do after that? Or does that create another hole? Then come to you and say, I would propose this.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if we change anything by twenty-five percent of words.
Mr. Mayor. I'll second the motion.
I was going to say, I seconded it, but I don't think it was there, but.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thanks for being here and giving us the, the idea. Thanks, Joe, for helping him speak up.
He had things to do, so.
So, we'll have to amend our resolutions then?
Just that one. But, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Shane, then on Resolution twenty eighteen eighteen, do we have to change the numbers on that?
My recommendation would be to hold off on Resolution twenty eighteen eighteen, because at this time, we don't know the total project cost. It's going to be dependent upon, one, how much did the, the drainage improvements add to the project, and then two, the, the other two alternate bids. So I would say, hold off on that. I would encourage the council, if, if it's on the agenda tonight, to consider Resolution twenty eighteen dash seventeen, which is setting the assessment hearing date for the Pinnaker Lake Estates project. So that project, the bids open on May thirty-first, and we'll have them in advance of your June, what is it, June fourteenth, city council meeting? So it might make sense to.
June twelfth.
June twelfth?
Go ahead, Shane.
So it might make sense to consider having that assessment hearing the, on, on the night of June twelfth, either at seven o'clock, at the beginning of your regular meeting, or, or possibly, I'll say at six-thirty, just before your regular meeting.
You'll have everything ready by the twelfth?
Excuse me?
You can have everything ready by the twelfth?
Yes, the bids, we'll receive the bids on May thirty-first.
Okay.
This project is a little.
Because we could do it at the workshop, too.
The assessment hearing?
Yeah, we have a workshop on the seventh. Either way, I mean, typically, the workshops, I guess, are longer than the meetings anyway, so. Let's say the assessment hearing at six-thirty on Tuesday, June twelfth, does that work for the council? All right, so make a motion to hold the assessment hearing for the Pinnaker Lake Estates project at Tuesday, June twelfth, six-thirty PM, twenty eighteen.
Second up.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the twenty eighteen dash fourteen, we need to amend that for the, the bids, or is that?
I did print a copy of that, is that the resolution reimbursing for?
No, it's plans and specs, prepare, now that the result, city. Plans and specs. Ordering advertisement for bids?
We just.
We just did that.
Yeah, we.
So that, you have to, but do you have to change the wording on this at all?
No, I don't, I don't think so, that's.
Okay. And then twenty eighteen fifteen is reimbursement. So we need to move the twenty eighteen fifteen?
Some of.
Second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Do the, since that resolution is listing numbers, does that need to be, does that need to wait, or does that need to still go through? Or can you go through?
Mr. Mayor, the numbers that it's representing is basically just talking about the percentage of proceeds and the bond proceeds towards the reimbursing the city. That's nothing to do with the cost.
Well, we're talking about reasonably, reasonably expecting to be reimbursed to an, and an estimated maximum principal amount of five hundred and thirty-three thousand. Does that, if that's not the maximum, is estimated enough to not worry about it?
Mr. Mayor, if you want to hold off on it and then get the attorney's opinion of getting it to coincide with the other resolution, just for sake of having the numbers in there.
All right. So we've moved on that one? Right, we've moved that one already?
Well, you made a motion, and I thought there was a second.
So withdraw the motion until we hear from the attorney?
Yes.
Motion withdrawn, and you'll get back to us with the attorney's opinion. All right, so we moved twenty eighteen seventeen, twenty eighteen fourteen, and we're holding off on fifteen and eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, was there also one?
There is one sixteen as well.
For basically the bonding resolution for Pinnaker Lake Estates. That you may want to consider tonight, because that project is a little bit ahead of the, the Old Viking project.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve Resolution number twenty eighteen dash sixteen, as written.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Seeing and hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Nope.
No, it was a little better.
Little bit changed the direction on this old Viking.